So it's the Senator, or is it someone else?
It's not the Senator, it's one of his staff.
Me too.
Here it is, let us know when you want it.
Me too.
We're one short. Representative.
Said I don't care.
Roll back.
Oh yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the Shippensburg area School District Committee of the Hole. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. August.
Thank you, Ms. Everly. First up, we have a very, very wonderful presentation from James Bird Elementary, led by Mrs. Piles. Turn it over to you and walk us through a pretty big deal.
We're all going to stand together.
Good evening, everyone. We are super excited to share about our exciting accomplishment of being a Blue Ribbon School. We have everyone standing together because it took all of us working together to make it happen. So before we get started, can we just do a round of applause for an awesome accomplishment? So what does it mean to be a Blue Ribbon School? That beautiful infographic up there tells you a little bit about what it means. But the most important part is it represents the highest national honor for all schools. It highlights academic excellence and equity in student achievement. There are two categories that you can earn it in. One is high performing schools and the other one is in achievement closing schools. That's what we earned it in, in closing the achievement gap. We have made significant progress closing the gap between the nonperformers and the performers into subgroups, specifically special ed students. Before, it was a national honor, but now with the Department of Education changes, it became Pennsylvania. That's why in the media you saw that it said first time being a Pennsylvania school. Sorry. I'm not sure. Oh, thanks, Troy. Music in the background. It's because it's the first time that Pennsylvania took over that process. So how did we get discovered for this? Pennsylvania goes through all of the data like the other states and they vet each school. And we received an email, I can remember sitting in a data team meeting and receiving an email that said, "You have been nominated by the state of Pennsylvania to be a Blue Ribbon School." We were very excited and then we found out that we had to do a long narrative process. So at the paperwork that you have in front of you is the narrative that our team had to go through in order for our school to be vetted as a Blue Ribbon School. We spent eight hours, nine hours, three hours, four hours, meeting before school to go through the stringent process of sharing why we were recommended as a national Blue Ribbon School. Again, I'm using the word national because that's what it was 40 years ago. It's been a 40-year process. However, this is the first year that the Department of Education kicked it back to Pennsylvania. I'm going to let Mrs. Martin talk to you a little bit about our journey from ATSI, the Highest Improvement Plan, to the highest achievement.
Yeah. Probably nervous. Hi, I'm Mrs. Jill Martin, first grade teacher at James Bird. I've been here for 28 years and counting. I was on the original ATSI team, which consisted of our principal at the time, curriculum director, director and assistant director of special education, one teacher from each grade level, two teachers from our third grade, our reading specialists, two special education teachers, two parents of special education students, and a CAU representative. So James Bird was designated as a school that required additional targeted support and improvement specific to our special education population subgroup. And we had two areas to improve upon. The first was the percentage of third grade students scoring proficient or advanced on PSSAs. And the second was the number of special education students missing more than 10% of the school days across the academic year. Now, we did learn through this process that it wasn't only our in-house students that we were providing the support for, but also the out-of-district, specific needs students. So students that were designated Shippensburg area School District students, but were placed out of district in a specially designed school for them. As Mrs. Pile said, it has been a journey, many hours, many days, summer, after school, during school, before school, all the above. We continued adding research-based programs and curriculum supplements, evidence-based strategies to grow not only our special ed population, but also the students and our staff overall. So I think that that's really important. We implemented many, many things over the years. Some have stuck and have worked and others we found something better. So just some of the things, and I'm going to try to keep it short, but we have Dojo, which is our parent communication system that we use daily, used by all teachers and staff. That helped kind of level the playing field. So teachers, staff communicate with parents daily, weekly. Mailing's home for absent kiddos after a certain, excuse me, a certain amount of days, we would mail home a little postcard saying, you know, "We missed you." Like, "Is everything okay?" We corrected misbeliefs about absenteeism along the way with communication with families. We've had Title I nights, Second Step Instruction for social-emotional learning, and then also Caring School Community Social Emotional Learning, which is kind of where we got back on track with the buy-in from those kiddos and their families. We adopted our SWISS PBAS data tracking system for our behavior team. And then we implemented our celebration assemblies and Positive PALE Awards for all students, not just our special ed population, again, which helped the buy-in with families and students and staff. Most recently, and I think the most important, is our Six Houses, One Family, and our VIP lunches. And then a little bit about, we added flooding to small group reading. So they're just some of the things for academics that we have put in place over the years that helped that buy-in. So this is kind of my closing. It's a little long, but it's, my progressive lens has needed the large print, so it won't take long. Okay, here we go. It's our belief that once we've taught a child, that student will always be our child throughout their educational journey, no matter when they leave my first grade classroom and they go to second, to third, to fourth, to senior in high school, to college. They're always our children. So once they leave our classrooms, they're still ours. We still take responsibility for them and keep those connections going, which we think is very, very important. With our Dojo messaging and family nights and other family community events, we make sure not only our students feel welcome, but our families feel welcome, important, supported. We are not just here for the child, we are here for the entire family as well. With our Six Houses, One Family, each student, teacher and staff members are part of a house which combines together to make one school family. And then we want the kiddos to know that they belong, they're important, they're loved, and they're part of our school community and school family. So they have their family at home, they have their family at school, and we're kind of all one big family. Now, it has been a long journey, many, many years, including COVID. We never gave up along the way. We continue to prove daily, weekly, yearly. We continue to make those special connections with every child so they know that they are worth something and how they can contribute and make our school and community a better place for everyone. I'm not going to cry, but I feel it coming on. We have an amazing principal and leader who pushes us to be our best and continues to support us and is our biggest cheerleader, and we are also hers.
I'm sorry.
I would move away from the mic. Just talk loud, Maggie.
I would like to begin acknowledging that public speaking is not my preferred activity. However, inspired by the motto at James Bird, "You can do hard things," I am approaching this moment with a positive mindset and a deep passion for my work, my colleagues, and our school community. At James Bird Elementary, we are achieving remarkable progress. I consider myself very fortunate in my role as an itinerant learning support teacher as it allows me to collaborate with numerous classrooms and observe firsthand the dedication, engagement, and love our teachers bring to their instruction. In my capacity as a special education teacher, I also strive to build, bridge the gap between general education and the special education continuum. This role presents challenges, but it also is incredibly rewarding. Recently, our school was privileged with a host, Lindsay Cumney. She is the author who has written extensively about early reading success and strategies for teaching reading to students in grades K through three. In the sessions, she concentrated on managing reading blocks with general education classrooms, including strategies for structuring lessons and effectively leading small group activities. I have implemented her recommendations and also from her sessions, I personally reached out to her and asked her to discuss specific needs for my students with severe dyslexia, including personal experiences with my own students. These efforts exemplify the commitment that James Bird feels to go up and above and beyond, beyond. Into infinity and beyond is one of our mottos this year. Expectations to make a meaningful difference in our students' lives. Finally, I want to highlight my involvement in the MTSS Multi-Tierred System of Supports framework, specifically as a member of the MTSS Behavior Committee. Our team works collaboratively to develop tailored support plans for students requiring additional behavior and emotional support. This teamwork enables our entire school community to progress positively and enhance our ability to meet the diverse needs of our students. Thank you.
I don't see much, so I actually share the sentiments about the public speaking. But growing up, I was a willing sting bubler. We always would go to Trinity High School for sports. I would drive by the Trinity every day when we went to the mall. And the thing that always stood out to me about Trinity was the big blue sign with the gold letters that said, "Blue Ribbon School." Obviously, in high school, I wasn't really sure what that meant, you know? But I was like, "I really wish my school had that sign." So teaching in a Blue Ribbon School for me truly has never been something I ever thought that I would ever do. It just, we were always working on something new, working on ATSI plan. We were all working so hard to get off of that plan. Then we're sitting in a faculty meeting and I walk in and there's a fake champagne shoot. And she's got a confetti cannon ready to shoot off. And I'm like, "What are we possibly going to win here today?" So, you know, I mean, you could tell her excitement was just over the top, excited about. She was, again, too, it was the end of the day, and I was like, "Okay." What's going on? So Andrea goes, "We are a Blue Ribbon School." And she says it just like that. And my eyes just welled up because truly, it is one of the biggest honors that we can receive as teachers, as educators, like truly even now. I just sat there and I was like, took my, and I call my, we weren't allowed to tell people, but I called my mom. My sister, and my sister is also an educator. She was like, "That is so cool." And I told a few other people, they all kept going around. But truly, it was truly one of those things. Sorry, and then I got lost here. It was truly one of those things that I just never thought it would happen. So later, the realization was that I never got to go to a Blue Ribbon School, but now I get to teach at a Blue Ribbon School. I get to drive in every morning with, "Maybe there'll be a blue wooden sign with blue letters." But now it's so amazing that like I get to teach at one of those schools. And all of these fabulous people behind me, our hard work and dedication have paid off.
Luanne Burt, first grade teacher, 21 years teaching, been through five principals. We have always been an amazing team, but Andrea has helped us to become an amazing family. And at James Bird, we truly are. Eight years we were on an improvement plan, eight years we stressed through that. She was here one year and we got off the improvement plan. Year two, Blue Ribbon School. So our family, hats off to her because she truly gave us the direction and the guidance to create all of this and the team she has built. We are with her to infinity and beyond.
I'm not quite sure how I can follow that up, but what I will say is this. When I talk to the staff about standing in front of the board and sharing with them the accomplishment, the one thing that I said is, "I can't stand here by myself because I didn't do it by myself." It was all of us working together. We went through a lot of hard things, we went through a lot of changes. And we switched from balanced literacy, what we all think, thought that we were doing the best for kids because that's how we were trained, to moving into science of reading. And that's not easy, especially without all the curricular resources that we need. But we stood by each other and we continue to stand by each other. We take care of each other, we take care of the kids, the kids take care of us, and we achieve great things. Give a round of applause one more time. Just a little kiss to all of you. Congratulations for being a school board member in a district that has a Blue Ribbon School, right? Any questions that you have for us?
Who else you got? Anybody else around here get it?
There were only 13 in the state, Fred.
How many around us? They got bragging rights or not?
You have bragging rights, stick your chest out.
Yeah, 13 in the states, there's 500 school districts.
Well, I can brag about it.
Definitely.
500 school districts, but how many elementary?
Right, right, yeah.
Is it public or non-public schools that can be nominated for?
Well, is it total education or just special education? Is that what you're just in?
Total. So in order to achieve, to get what we got, you have to have 30% of your students below the poverty level, and you have to have so many subgroups listed. So different ethnicities and all different kind of cultural backgrounds. So it's not just the affluent schools, it's a baseline to make sure that every student population is represented.
Very good, thank you.
It goes without saying what a tremendous accomplishment and certainly something that did not happen overnight. You know, I can remember all the trips down to the IU and the plan that you had to work through. And obviously, you've hit it on the head. You know, it's a combination of great teachers and great leaders working together. Everybody rowing in the same direction. So fantastic job, Burt, we're all very proud of you.
Congrats.
How do you get nominated?
So every state goes through a process of looking at data. So if you're in the top 10% for achievement, so if you have a state score, state testing is in the top percent, that's how you get top achieving. And then closing the gap, you have grown the largest number of students from below to on-grade level or near-grade level. So they go through that entire process with the state and they nominate you. And then you're sitting in a data team meeting and you get an email.
All right, I mean, I'm a social worker and so I have a special place in my heart for the students who have the greatest needs. And to get that kind of recognition, that we're closing that gap, that is very meaningful. And I also love it, it was a sort of comment at the end, that you were brave enough to do something different that was, even though maybe the previous model wasn't broken, but you took the risk to do something that was maybe even better. That was probably an uncomfortable adjustment to take that leap of faith. And so huge props for that. And then, we need a sign.
We do. Absolutely.
And a banner and a rug maybe.
So I grew up in Boise, I was wondering if we could use some like, a Blue Ribbon turf thing in the field or something?
Has to be a word though, because word's the word.
I just had a quick question. So as this is the first year that the federal government sort of kicked this to the states, did all the standards remain the same or did Pennsylvania modify it a little bit?
So all the standards remained the same. This is actually a process that we found out last year and then we had to go through the writing the narrative. It's super long, 14 pages, and that's not even all of it. And I got the final confirmation and I told them, "My God, it's for real." Like, "We made it to the last step for a Blue Ribbon School." And then two weeks before it was announced in DC, they pulled out. So it's the exact same process. They just decided that they were going to kick it back to the states to give the states more power, is what the email that I received said.
Yeah.
So basically, it's the same honor except for we don't get a limo ride to DC and we have a big fancy hotel overnight, but it's okay. We don't need that, right?
Well, massive congratulations. I love to see the real sort of sense of team with you all. It's noticeable and impressive, so congratulations.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Outstanding. So next up, we have Dr. Donat to talk about the achievement side of PSSA scores from last year.
Turn that away so that we avoid what happened earlier. So with the PSSA scores for this year, I want to, before we get started, I want to kind of provide a little bit of context. So the data that I'm sharing tonight is a snapshot of student achievement. It's one moment in time. And in an upcoming Committee of the Hole meeting, I'll be sharing our growth data, which shows you how we grow students over the course of an academic year. But tonight is limited to the PSSA data from 2000, from last spring, and it is one moment in time. Also, at another upcoming meeting, I'll share our comparison data because I know you all are interested in how we compare to other districts. But that's not tonight, tonight is just the PSSA data. So the first thing that I want to show you is grade three ELA performance level distribution. So what you're seeing is the light blue and dark blue are the percents proficient and advanced. And to provide some context, this is the cohort who was unable to attend preschool due to COVID during the 2020-21 academic year. And I do think it's important to keep some of these contextual pieces in mind. So if you go to the next slide, what I'm showing you on the next slide is our year-to-year comparison data. And what you're going to see- going to see is that there was a dip from last year's advanced and proficient level to the current academic year. One of the things that I have learned in talking with other partners is that across the state, um, over 89 school districts that partner with Linkit, which is a data aggregation company, they're reporting that all of those districts are seeing declines in ELA data. I don't yet have the statewide comparison to be able to tell you if that's true for all 2500 and some districts, but I do know that right now we're seeing it as a trend. Go ahead to the next one. And the rest of this show, I'm going to show you one grade specific and then I'm going to compare it to the three-year average. So for fourth grade, you're going to see again our percentage proficient, advanced, basic and below. And this would be the cohort that these students were in kindergarten during the 2021 academic year. They're currently our fifth graders, but they were in fourth grade when they took this PSSA test. This is the fourth grade data. Go to the next slide. Again, you'll see the year to year comparison data. This grade did dip slightly, not as much as the prior grade that I showed you. Next slide. And our fifth grade, these are the students who were in kindergarten, I believe, our first grade. I gotta double check that during the night. Oh yes, these were the kids who were in kindergarten during the 1920 academic year. So they did not receive a full year of educational instruction during those foundational years. So they're now, um, they are, they are fifth grade data. And again, you can see about half of them are scoring proficient and advanced. Go to the next slide, please. And again, a slight decrease in the ELA scores of the three-year trend. For sixth graders, you're seeing again the difference of proficient, advanced, basic and below. Go ahead Leslie. And again, the three-year trend, we continue to dip slightly down this academic, this past academic year. And in seventh grade? Seventh grade, we have a concern and we've been under discussions with the building principals and with those ELA teachers to try to understand what is happening. We're looking at our curriculum and we're also looking at the strategies that teachers are using. Those conversations started last year and they are ongoing this year. We want to make sure we fix this. We do not want this trend to continue for another year. Go ahead, Leslie. And again, you'll see it was a significant decline in the past year. One of the things to keep in mind with this group of educators is that they are all new to teaching in this grade level. They're relatively new and that is also one of the potential explanations behind that dip. Eighth grade ELA, you're going to see that they are definitely performing better than what the seventh grade did. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see that they did not did this year. So whatever is going on in eighth grade, we want to replicate in our seventh grade year. All right. So again, this is that note that I shared, that Linkit shared that of their 89 district partners, all of them noted a decline in ELA scores in the past year. So I'm curious, as we begin to the statewide data to point out what is happening for students. Is it just a reflection of COVID? Is it a reflection of people moving away from the balanced literacy into the science of liter, is the science of reading and teachers needing time to acclimate to that new training and the way of coaching literacy? We're not sure yet. Go ahead and go to the next group. Now we're going to switch over to math. And in math, third grade, you're seeing the percentage of below basic, basic, proficient and advanced along with, the next slide shows you the three-year trend. With this data, I do think it is important to note that this past year of PSSA administration was our first year administering the math tests in the online format. This upcoming spring, we will be also administering our ELA PSSA data online because it is requiring all districts to do so. Yes, Dr. Good.
I, I just want to make sure I understand these bar charts. So this is third graders in 23, third graders in 24 and third graders in 25, or is this the same group of students?
Excellent question. It is three separate cohorts of students.
Okay.
Different populations. And I think it's really important to make that distinction because each cohort of students is very different in their competition. There will be some cohorts that have more IEPs than other cohorts. We will have different levels of preparedness. So while we can't necessarily compare across the three years, we do want to monitor how they're doing year to year. So we will be, and that's when we go to the growth data to make sure that we're looking at how an individual cohort is doing as they progress through the school. Other questions?
I understood. I'll probably have a better question. But what, these are kids in elementary.
Yes, sir.
So when they get to high school or middle school and then they go to high school, is there different, is there different expectations or different grading when they get from down here to up here with that gap?
Remember the PSSA is a once a year test that is testing them on the standards. When they're looking at grades, grades are a reflection of student accomplishment in individual classroom work. And sometimes it includes participation. Sometimes it includes like grades are different from our PSSA scores. Grades are controlled by the individual teacher. The PSSA scores are a statewide standardized test. Does that answer your question?
I guess, I guess so. But me, I just want to, I'm just trying to figure out the information that these teachers are pushing out to the lower level. Is this, is it helping? I mean, not helping. Is it, do the kids with 11th and 12th grade have a, have a baseline that they can work off? Do you understand what I'm saying? This is graded elementary and you have time to fix when they get ready to graduate. Is that, does this indication what they're going to be like when they graduate?
Is it an indication of what they're going to be like when they graduate? Is it an indication of our students' preparedness?
Yes.
For high school?
Yeah.
Yes and no. Cause you can't really correlate PSSA data to actual classroom grades or to graduation rates. Cause there's a lot of factors that go into perseverance to graduate.
Okay. I, 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 sorry. PSSA one thing and grades another. Okay. I'll go into find out. Okay. What I want to know. Thank you.
A question. If we see this with PSSA, do we see the same trend with grade level or the grades from the kids?
We're seeing the same trends this year for ELA. It's, you'll see the same trends for most of the grades. Math, we're going to see slightly different trends and that's what we're going to go through now is to see the different trends in math.
Ms. Howard, do you mean grades in class? Compared to this?
Yeah, kinda.
So I, I guess our large number of students not making progress towards bench, uh, grade level benchmarks i- in, in elementary school that they would need to be held back?
Yeah, we're not seeing that we are holding this back because we don't necessarily do that in the early grades unless there's significant decline that a student is not prepared for their next grade.
The reason I ask is, I mean, we've been chit chatting a lot about this subject and we're, we're, we're hearing and seeing different data from different states. And I think Bill alluded, uh, superintendent August alluded to chats with Kentucky, I think.
So that, that was a discussion around pocket academies and, and different, different like opportunities that we might be able to bring specifically pathways at the high school.
On my, on my way to work this morning, I had a two hour ride. I got a chance to listen to ex, ex governor, governor of Mississippi. And their proficiency rates are pretty good. How would this chart compare with another state? They were talking proficiencies of like 75%.
Yes. So Mississippi is currently in the news for a lot of reasons. One of which is that they were early adopters moving from the balanced literacy approach into structured, into the science of reading, which is the phonics based approach. Our district also invested heavily into phonics based instruction by adopting the UFLI curriculum that all of our teachers are using. And correct me if I'm speaking out of term, but they are really seeing a huge difference in the students and their ability to grasp basic concepts that are instrumental for literacy.
It seems to me that if our teachers at that level can impact kids with reading, is there, are there such things that get the same impact out of mathematics?
And yes, our math coach, um, Lotella said, if we look at our Acadians data, and that's another dataset that I can bring to you if you are interested in our Acadians data, will show how teachers are working with our students from the beginning of the year and their skills at the beginning of the year in reading and in math and how the teachers are growing them, exceeding in many cases, the grade level expectation from growth to get our students who are behind in order to get them back up. So yeah, the district has invested in UFLI. We've invested in decodables. We've been investing in training all of our teachers in the science of reading through our letters program. And so the data we're seeing now, remember it takes some time for that training to then trickle up. So we're starting to see really good, amazing results in our primary grades, but it's going to take a few years for those students to go through the system till we see that improvement in the upper grades.
Would it be? And that's good. That's phenomenal.
Well, thank you all for paying for this.
Yeah. Um, would it be possible to see Mississippi's exact same PSA and see where they are?
Mississippi doesn't take the Pennsylvania.
Well, anything, something equivalent.
You have to find something that was comparable. Mr. August, you gonna say something?
I, I mean, I was just going to point out, I mean, Mississippi definitely did a lot of the things that we're doing and a few others that I've read. Um, it's a different test. So it would be apples to oranges or different type of apples.
If somebody has invented the wheel already and it sounds like we're kind of following, following suit and it seems to be working with them. Um, just saying.
Yeah. Learning from anyone who's doing what we want to do better is absolutely something we're interested in.
Yeah. And I would say kudos to our teachers for making the shift from structured reading to from balanced literacy into the science of reading.
In that, in that, uh, newscast this morning, the ex-governor said that was one of the most difficult things that they all went through. And I mean, they got pushed back, they had problems. It was, they did it.
Yeah. So how many of you guys have done through letters training at this point in time? Show of hands. Yeah. And they have done, it's a lot to go through the letters training. It requires reading, a ton of substitute plans so that they can get the coverage to be able to attend these trainings. And then it's sitting through a huge information dump. And our next step will be to continue that training so that they go from the theoretical background to the implementation and get more skilled with the implementation of that literacy background. So we're excited for what's coming.
Thank you.
And I would just add on, I mean, you, you heard in the blue ribbon presentation about MTSS, which is the system in place that provides the support to, to get kids where they are, to, to track them with data, engage in interventions with students and make those classroom adjustments that help move kids forward, which we can see is successful, um, you know, when, when we do that. So putting that, putting that into place on top of the instructional philosophy changes, along with aligning resources, all help everyone row in the same direction. And, and understand, you know, when Dr. Donat comes back, she's going to be talking about growth. And that's what the blue ribbon was about was growth, you know, so they, they're, you meet the students where they are. Um, you give them tier one instruction and those students that, that don't respond or don't respond enough get tier two, which is what MTS is about. So there, there's a system in place so to support these students and, and grow them, uh, you know, as they work through the grade levels.
I would like to see how our system looks in comparison to theirs, kind of. I mean, if they're, they have a successful system.
So there, there are a couple of things that are, that are, you know, I can, I've maybe read similar things about that because it is kind of a, uh, they adopted statewide a, you don't leave third grade unless you're on grade level, which is
Correct.
Something that, that has some philosophical discussions around. Um, and I think they also, I think if I remember correctly from the article I read, um, were around high dosage tutoring, you know, after school.
Yes.
You know, so that's, so the things that you
I think it's probably the same article.
Yeah. So.
And the other thing that I quickly do need to give a lot of credit to is although this round of data is not going to necessarily reflect, um, strides that we've made, but as a district, all of our buildings are now really steeped in data. Our educators meet regularly with one another to discuss achievement data, to look at benchmark data, to differentiate based off of that data. And I really feel that that investment in a data informed approach is going to yield really good results over time. And we'll start to see that in our road data hopefully when we look at that next.
I'll be anxious to see some of these classes coming up through.
No, me too. Excited. All right. So moving on to math. We've got fourth grade math and I'm just going to have this just along and flash through these so you can see, but it's the same type of information. Fourth grade math of the three-year comparison of different cohorts going through, slight dip in fourth grade. Go ahead. And then our fifth grade along with the three-year trend. Our three-year trend is stable. Go ahead to sixth grade, please. And our sixth grade data. And our sixth grade, uh, three-year trend. Sixth grade is another grade that we have to dig into. But I'm going to be very honest. We've got to look at what's happening in the curriculum and we have to figure out how we can replicate other results that our upper grades are seeing. Go ahead to seventh grade. And then to the seventh grade trend. Oh, the seventh and eighth grade do not have three-year trends. Uh, my subscription for Nexus, I ran out of tokens for whatever that means. So I will have to bring that to you the next time. But I did want to make sure that you have the performance levels for the seventh, eighth, and seventh and eighth. And the same with the kids in data. I couldn't get to that because exploration from Nexus. So I apologize for that. Any other questions on our data?
Is, is middle school just terrible in general? Okay. I mean, I hated middle school, but.
It's not just terrible. We're seeing pockets of really, really good things. What our eighth grade teachers are doing in both ELA and in math is something that is awesome. And what we need to do now is have discussions with those grades to find out what's working, why it's working and how we can have that same success in our sixth and seventh grade.
Yeah. So I'm not throwing the middle school under the bus. I just, middle, developmentally, I wondered if it was just, yeah, yeah.
So achievement wise, and I think even locally, you know, the state averages on standardized testing and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, have been kind of similarly low.
In middle school?
Right.
Middle school is where we start to see, um, students become disengaged and test scores then show it. So and that's one of the challenges and one of the reasons I really love our new mission is that part of our mission is to design engaging and challenging work for those students to try to change that perception and that.
And, and I would just prepare, you know, anytime you, you know, the research I've read on switching from paper and pencil to taking it on, online shows that there is usually an implementation dip for at least three years.
You're saying we should go back to paper and pencil?
Well, the state doesn't let us. They, they've mandated that we They, they've mandated that we go to, to testing, but there is, you know, from, from what I've read over the years, there is a dip, you know, as the kids make that change.
Any questions for me besides those? Thank you all for your time. I'll see you again soon with the growth data.
Thank you.
Facilities committee, Dr. Goats, did you, and Dr., put you on the spot, did you wanna talk about the change order or member of the?
It's pretty straightforward. Yeah, I don't know, there wasn't anything terribly, uh, what's the word I'm looking for?
Pressing.
Huh?
Pressing.
Sliding. I was gonna say controversial, I guess. There wasn't anything terribly controversial, it seemed straightforward, so I, I don't really have anything to say about it unless somebody asks questions.
It's a big rock, right?
We, we hit some rock when we were putting the lights in, so they had to do some extra work to bust up the rocks to get us the lights, which we currently have.
So we have a $4,000 change.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Barwin?
Yep. Wait for Leslie to pull it up here. Um, so I got a couple of questions from some board members on the last meeting when I showed the, our Act One adjusted index for fiscal year 26, '27. So I just wanted to run through that a little bit more in depth. So here's that slide again that we saw last meeting that shows our Act One adjusted index for next, next budget cycle, so fiscal year 26, '27. And this compares all the Cumberland and Franklin schools, and you can see our market value personal income aid ratio at .5952, and then our adjusted index is 4.7, which is one of the highest out there for Cumberland Franklin School districts. Slide Leslie. So the Act One index formula, so the example there, at the bottom there, I'll read it. It's for school districts with a market value personal income aid ratio greater than .4. The value of their index is adjusted upward by multiplying the base index by the sum of .75 and their market value personal income aid ratio. So I put ours on the slide there. So the state-based index is at the top right, it's our, it's three and a half percent this year. And then the Shippensburg, which was on the last slide, the market value personal income aid ratio was .5932. So putting that in this formula, our, remember on the bottom there, it said if it's greater than .4, it's adjusted upward. So ours is at .5932. So using the formula, you do three and a half percent, the state index multiplied by .75 plus the aid ratio, and that comes out to our 4.7 adjusted Act One index for fiscal year 26, '27. Next slide, Leslie. So this is a chart that shows the base index of the state, that's in red, going all the way back to fiscal year 17, 2017, and it goes out all the way to next, the one we just talked about, 26, '27. So you can see there is a pre-COVID, you know, it just stayed pretty steady, the state index stayed in the twos, and then we have that peak, the uphill mountain there with the, with COVID, and we're, we're trending back down. So the red, the red line there is the state index, the blue line is the adjusted index, so what we can raise taxes up to. You could see we've always been above the state index. And then that green line is showing what the tax increase was for that fiscal year. You see, we had two zero percents there, I think that was, that was COVID years, and we've gone to index a couple of years after that. Slide Leslie. Okay, so this, getting more into the Shippensburg's market value personal income aid ratio, those are our ratios dating back to 2017, 2018. So we were pretty steady there, and then we saw a bit of an incline, you know, with, with COVID, just like the base index, it went up. Next slide shows a little bit more data on the aid ratio. So this, this is the data going back to 2017, 2018. This is, this is all off the PDE website, Pennsylvania Department Ed. And this, this shows, so the personal, or the market value personal income aid ratio kind of tells what the district's relative wealth is per pupil. So you can see it, it uses the weighted average daily membership number in there, like the middle, middle column there. So it uses that to tell us, in relation to the state average, our relative wealth of each people in the school district. So one would say if we go back to the first slide, we're one of the highest aid ratios in Cumberland Franklin County, you know, Waynesboro's up there, so that's kind of telling us that we're, you know, not one of the wealthiest in Cumberland Franklin County.
What was the WADM, what is the DM again?
Weighted average daily membership. That's the number of students coming to the district.
So this is the, I just, I wasn't at the last meeting, but this is fascinating to me, I, you know, I don't know, eight years on the school board and I never understood how this worked.
Yeah, it's very convoluted formula.
Yeah. Well, it, it's fascinating, right? So this personal income to market value ratio is essentially saying how much money people make relative to the cost of real estate in that area, right? I mean, you look at the first page, and you can see that the, the only two districts that are below the .4 are Camp Hill and Fanat Metal, which are two very, very different places. I assume, you know, Camp Metal, or sorry, Camp Hill, expensive place to live, but high wages, high incomes. So you end up with a, a low ratio, but Fanat Metal, not an expensive place to live, low wages, and so you still end up with a low index. But then Shippensburg, because our index is so high, and Waynesboro as well, what we're saying is it's an expensive place to live and wages are low.
Right. Is that?
And, yes, and, yeah. And I think it has to do too with a number of students, like, I've also kind of equated to that, because I know at Big Spring, they've been trending downwards, their WADM's, their weighted average daily memberships, number has gone down, and ours is trending up too. So I think there's a correlation with
And I suppose you don't have any insight on where that .4 threshold comes from? It seems like it's fairly arbitrary.
From the state, yeah, that's just given by the state.
Yeah.
Is it safe to say as we continue to grow, I mean, that will be factored in to our?
Correct, and it depends, I think, on the income of those families as well, and
How many years out till we, our index is expected to drop into the 2% range?
Um, so in '27, '28 was proj, it's projected to, I think, to drop to, so this year, for FY '26, '27, the one we just, we're talking about now, they projected it to be 3.8. The state index was 3.5. So I, I think a couple of years, probably two or three more years until we dip into the high twos.
And this is just the projection of your professional association, right? This is, this is not data from the state.
Right, it's just expert opinion.
And, and when does the state release the actual number? It's like beginning of the year-ish, right?
State end, like the state index, the 3.5%, that's released September 1, and then the adjusted index is released shortly after that.
So, so it's our, oh, so this number for 2000, the fiscal year '27, that is the, the number?
That is our, 4.7% is our Act One index for next school year.
Oh, okay, all right. So if we raise taxes to the index, which is the decision we have to make in the spring, it would be 4.7?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, that's trending down to Mr. Nagle's point compared to prior years.
How much revenue would a 2% drop from 4.7?
To 2.7?
I'd put you on the spot.
Yeah, I'd have to do a calculation with the millage rate, and I don't know that for next year yet, and I haven't dipped into that calculation.
In general, we get how much revenue from, from our local tax base?
Oh, it's 32, 33 million.
And if we cut that in half?
Well, it, so you would cut the increase in half from 4.7 to 2.4, 2.3. It could be, I don't wanna say a wrong number, but maybe a little over a million dollars, 1.5, yeah, that you couldn't go, unless you file for referendum, like an exception to go above the index. Yeah, so you'd be locked into
Technically, we could possibly be looking at a million dollar worth of cash flow.
Right, that, well, it's not gonna be a loss, it's what we could earn in, in future years. So next year, it just cuts the amount of revenue the board has control over almost. So it's locked into, you know, say, say the real estate taxes are 33 million right now. We're only, it would only lock us into maybe going up to 34 and a half million instead of 35 and a half million, the amount we can increase it.
It makes our one lever less powerful.
Does.
Yep, so just touching on the state budget again, we're still at, waiting on a pass budget from the state for this school year. You know, the governor proposed the budget back in February of 2025. All state funding has been frozen, so that's 27.7 million of our 72.2 million dollar budget that we are just not, we're not seeing yet. We're still waiting roughly, on roughly 2.8 million in state funding for last school year. So there's some subsidy money that is recognized in June, but not received until July, August, September from the state. So we're still waiting on that. And then as of the end of this month, October, we should have received, in a normal year, if a budget was passed, we would have received roughly about 5.2 million, 5.2 million dollars from state funding already for this year. So when, when you take that 2.8 million and 5.2 million that we're missing, I mean, that's interest income of roughly 60,000 to 70,000 that we've missed out on already this school year. And the longer, longer this drags on, the more that interest number is gonna climb. So still waiting on some news from the state budget. And I just wanted to touch on the technology budget, I know there's some questions, this is, again, just a quick overview of the school year, the budget number was 845,000. Items included in there, a lot of it is software-driven, so it's, you know, power school, and I, you know, if you have any questions, we can dig deeper with Dr. Donat and Dr. Stevens, but cybersecurity's in there, our network, some IU services are brought up in there, but if anyone wants to dig a little deeper in there, I'd be happy to do that. Most of the time when our devices come up to be purchased again, they actually aren't in the technology budget. When that comes up, we need to pull, the district has always pulled from fund balance with that, so that's always brought back to the board to purchase new laptops, new Chromebooks, anything like that.
Big number.
And that's it, if there's any questions?
Thank you, Caleb.
Thanks.
Do you know when the call is?
Are you good, how are you?
Wow.
Soccer season.
Yeah.
My partner actually is here tonight because he, um, he
There's a big meeting at the
She was banned.
This week.
I'm always, I'm always good for every other, but
Press conference.
Because I also feel like I have more of a
Spit out a resolution on Friday.
Mr. Kressler not here today?
PSBA.
He's not here yet.
I won't feel guilty about stealing sports, sports information.
To get a resolution passed and be a part of that.
You doing any, is that one there? That's the last one?
No, we didn't. We got to go there.
They put the card away, they didn't plug it in last time, so the battery don't charge the mic.
Are we gonna be okay? We are. We're not gonna have that screech anywhere.
Well, that's, that's the difference.
I don't like getting too deep into the weeds on that formula and stuff, but I think it's good information.
It is good information. Actually, I'm gonna like, I'm figuring it out there first. Nathan, Nathan helped to make that a little more stand up.
It's all on the PDE website, just search that with
Yeah, one more, it's all
I'll tell you what, something's up with Nathan's.
Katrina. Katrina, when you're done, can you walk that out? When you're done.
We've been having issues with this.
Grab the cards.
Yeah.
Now we have a board meeting. We have a company come in looking for placing the
I don't know.
When they do stuff in the cafeteria.
Deep in the weeds.
No, I, I think people appreciate it.
Thing in the middle when people phone in.
And I think Dr. Goats did a great job with his
Like how you get that
Your hands cold.
Listen, they say cold hands.
I remember one there was a
You know, we move fast.
We need to learn how to do that.
What kind of argument?
Katrina, did you not have a card?
I had to call in.
Did you have a card?
I get out here like every
Okay. You're, you're an agenda item?
Totally. I told her.
Okay.
Where are you from? From Philly to here, that's all over the place.
Yeah, no.
You ain't that old.
You should be looking a lot, a lot older while I'm traveling back and forth.
All righty.
Yeah, that's true, that's what they say, but it ain't real.
Yeah, so I'm 31.
Oh, okay, nah, you don't look it.
You wanna
How long you gonna be here?
I have a deal that says I'll do it.
That's good. I enjoyed watching you on TV, like a channel. Channel 8 don't cover too much of that.
That's why, you know, when we catch
Yeah. I had to drink.
I just wanna go off the sheets.
People have been saying you got a couple of my carrots.
Yeah, that's right. I don't, I really don't know him.
That's what the streets have been saying, the streets have been saying.
So he's from WGIA.
We were coming, because we wanted to see, obviously, we're doing
You said he was not
Guys on the board, if somebody would just like do a quick interview.
The board, yes.
Would you be fine to do it?
Yeah, I just
Always
Midnight.
Midnight.
He said we'll be here until 2:00 AM, you know?
Looking at this, I'm not making
We'll shut it down. Yeah, that'd be good. I was gonna say, could we get you for a quick second now? Let me ask
You can restart now.
They are going to hit the gamble and throw me a shocker.
My carrot.
And I'll be glad to do whatever you want.
Okay.
What you doing, though? You know what you're doing, but you're calling them on these picks.
They already all have it. They've been bugging me already. You might as well put him on the list, too.
They all coming after my carrot.
Gotta be somebody, you and me.
They're just coming after you next, Mr. Kressler.
You hurt nothing, but DT, Dallas House is good.
It is a cell phone, it doesn't look like it.
I'll send you my information.
You didn't last.
But yeah.
Really, I know it's not going until midnight.
Ready?
We're ready.
Really, I know it's not going until midnight. I really think it'll be like two hours.
By the looks of this, I'm thinking we'll be done under an hour.
All depends on, all depends on how many people are on call.
Depends on how many of them get up and line up and want to say something. Tell them to keep it down.
From Mike Carey.
I'll make them do more.
Time, we better get out of here.
Hello, and welcome to the Shippensburg Area School District planning an action meeting. The board did meet an executive session prior to the committee of the whole regarding personnel matters. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Here.
Mr. Mike Carey.
Here.
Mr. Levi Kressler. Dr. Nathan Goats.
Here.
Dr. Michael Lyman.
Here.
Mr. Kirk Nagle.
Here.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Here.
Mr. Darren Donovan.
Here.
Steph Everly.
Here.
And Mr. Leo Blunt.
Here.
Did you mean the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As we begin our deliberations this evening, let us once again be reminded of our duty to represent all of the children of this school community, regardless of age, sex, race, or creed, and regardless of need or ability. This meeting is being livestreamed and uploaded to the district's YouTube channel. May we now have a moment of silence to reflect on our thoughts, plans, and actions on behalf of the students in the Shippensburg Area School District. And may we also have a moment of silence for Diana Lee Balance, nineteen-eighty-one graduate of Shippensburg Area Senior High School, Jaclyn Hoover, nineteen-fifty-six graduate of Shippensburg Area Senior High School, and Lawrence A. Mick McNotten, Shippensburg Area School District teacher, coach, and athletic director, Hall of Fame. Mr. August, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Is there a motion to approve the agendas listed?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan. Second by Mr. Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Citizens' comments regarding agenda items? I'm not seeing any of those. Reports. Leo.
Good evening, everyone. Since Mr. Kressler isn't here tonight, I feel less guilty about stealing his thunder. So for sports, boys soccer made districts for their fourth year in a row. They finished with a record of twelve and six. Girls soccer team qualified for districts for the first time since two thousand and nine. Congratulations to their entire team. Both teams lost, however, unfortunately, in the first round, both two to nothing. Football qualified for their districts and will be facing Warwick for their first game away this Friday. Cross-country had its district qualifiers this past weekend. My boy Ryland Asper ran an exceptional time of fifteen forty-seven, qualified for states. I believe that the states for cross-country are being held this upcoming Saturday in Hershey, so we wish Ryland the best of luck. On top of this, the cross-country team went undefeated, finishing ten and oh. Now going to golf, Katie Beckenbaugh qualified for the state championships. I'm not sure when those are being held, but congratulations to her. Community, community night was held at our newly-built stadium this past Friday. It was a great way to bring all the teams together and highlight all the hard work they put in throughout the season. I may have been more excited, however, about all the great desserts being sold there. The whoopee pies were great. And now my partner, Damian Powell, would like to finish the rest.
Sash's Coffee House will be held on October thirty, this coming Thursday. I believe it starts at seven o'clock. Doors open at six forty-five. Trunkertree is being held tomorrow night as well, and many of the Sash's clubs will be participating in it. Sash's Drama Club will be putting on Pride and Prejudice on November thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth, with two shows being put on the fifteenth. Tickets are eight for students, ten for adults. The Sash's band will be going to the Chambersburg Holiday Parade, as well as the Harrisburg Holiday Parade in November. The Sash's marching band is wrapping up their season with their very last performances this coming Friday, maybe next Friday. Sash's Key Club will be hosting the annual Veterans Day Ceremony on November tenth at the high school. Boys versus, the boys versus girls volleyball game is being held tomorrow night at six o'clock in the gym. That's all.
Superintendent's report.
None this week, thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda, we have item four A, the approval of minutes. Administration recommends approving the minutes from the October thirteenth meeting. Item four B is the finance report. Item four C is the disposal resource. Administration recommends disposal of the following resource books that are no longer in use. Item four D is the field trip location request. Administration is recommending the approval to add the Furnace Run Park as the location for the fifth-grade field trips. Four E is the TSI Title I Schoolwide Plan for Nancy Grayson. Administration recommends approval of the Nancy Grayson Title I Schoolwide Plan, TSI Plan, as required by federal programs to receive Title I funding. Item four F is the VMware. Administration recommends approval of the new VMware of a cost of six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty dollars, and this expense will come out of the technology budget. Item four G is the facilities use agreement. Administration recommends approval of the attached facilities use agreement with the Shippensburg University for the class of twenty-twenty-six commencement ceremony to be held at the Loris Center on June second, twenty-twenty-six at seven PM. Four H is the authorization for payment of November and December twenty-five bills. Since the board, school board only meets one time in November and December, administration's recommending the authorization to pay the general fund, capital reserve fund, construction fund, and cafeteria fund bills for November and December. Item four I is the personnel for professional and support, to include a number of leave of absences, new appointments, successful completion of thirty-day probationary period, substitutes, resignations, and the volunteer coaches. Is there a motion to approve items four A through four I?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Donovan. Discussion?
Four, four G.
Facilities, there's no chance that we're going to have graduation out in our new stadium.
Not for this year, Mr. Scott. We're looking to do it one, at least one more time at Loris.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five A on the action agenda, we have the requests for early graduation. High school administration recommends approval to permit a student request to graduate early if the student has satisfied all graduation requirements at Shippensburg Area Senior High School. Is there a motion to approve item five A?
So moved.
Motion made by Dr. Goats.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey. Discussion?
I'm impressed. And it's, looks like you go into a pretty cool program.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five B, the residency hearing on ten-ten, twenty-twenty-five. Administration recommends approval of the adjudication prepared and action relative to the residency matter pertaining to student AB1. This is the reference to the school board residency hearing that was held on October tenth. The outcome of the hearing was the student AB1 is not a resident of Shippensburg Area School District. Is there a motion to approve item five B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donovan. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five C is the approval to participate in the IDEAA grant programs for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. Administration recommends approval to participate in the IDEAA Part B and Section six-one-nine grant programs. Is there a motion to approve item five C?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five D is the agreements to join the Franklin County Learning Center Joint Authority. Administration recommends approval of the agreements to join the Franklin County Learning Center Joint Authority. The buy-in amount for partial ownership of the facility is six-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand dollars and will be paid from the fund balance. Membership allows the district to gain a reduced rate for students placed at the learning center and reserve slots when its programs, within its programs for Shippensburg students. Is there a motion to approve item five D?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by Dr. Goats. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five E is the Musco Lights change order. The facilities committee recommends approval of the change order for additional rock drilling charges. An air hammer was required to drill the foundations as rock was extremely hard limestone. The change order is for four thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve item five E?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nagle. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On the discussion agenda, we have item six A, and those are the policies for first reading and discussion. Six B is the Market Street Sports Group LLC agreement. And six C is the Near Pod Renewal. Any member need clarification or questions regarding those three items?
Yeah, I'll take, for the new policy on six A, one-twenty-two-point-one, just looking for some examples of when the board's recommendation wouldn't be needed for, for a group. That would be helpful in a situation like this.
I defer to you, Ms....
So are you asking, ask your question again, I'm sorry?
This is saying that the, a group can meet without board approval, like a student group that's outside of the district?
No, they would, it would have to be our own district students.
Okay, but then they, they wouldn't need the district or the, the board's approval to, to do so?
They would have, they would, this policy would give them equal access to the district buildings to have a meeting. If they would become like a school-sponsored club or activity, then they would have to have board approval after that.
What's this, like, more of a permanent thing or a long-term thing?
Yep.
Any other questions, comments, clarification? All right, moving on to the citizens' comments regarding non-agenda items. Just be please sure to identify yourself by name and borough township. All comments to the board as a whole, and make sure they are in the form of a statement. Questions will be taken under advisements, and responses to questions will be offered after due deliberation, and will be provided by the superintendent at the direction of the board within a few days of the board meeting. You'll be allowed three minutes for your comments, and comments relative to private student matters and personnel issues should be directed to the appropriate school authority outside of this meeting. The presiding officer reserves the right to interrupt or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant.
Good evening. My name is Ms. Katrina Nyman. I'm a teacher, a music teacher at three buildings within the Shippensburg Area School District. Our students are amongst the highest performing, and we, as a community, need to reflect that with compensating our teachers appropriately. Our teachers deserve a fair and reasonable raise after they took concessions in the last contract. Additionally, I have information that I'd like to share on behalf of some of our members. For over a hundred teachers in our school district, a spousal carve-out would mean that those members would be losing money. Whatever raise they would be getting would be completely eaten up by having to purchase healthcare elsewhere. On average, that is looking to be anywhere between five and fourteen thousand dollars for members, for teachers in this room.
Hello, I am Desiree Cupp. I'm a teacher here in the district. I'm also a parent. I understand that some board members in some of our community have negative thoughts about covering our spouses moving forward in our insurance coverage. But if we truly think about what benefits are, I think it will become more relatable. When you applied for a job, when I applied for a job, when anyone applies for a job, we don't just look at the hourly pay, we look at our benefit package. That is what we have done here as teachers, as employees of this district. We didn't come here for a paycheck, we came here for a benefit package, as well as to do the job that we love. When we, when you ask us to give up these benefits now, it's just not okay. It's a lot of money coming out of our pocket in return. We would not be receiving, many of us would not be receiving a pay increase. I would like to ask others to think about every place that you shopped this week. Did you go to Walmart or Giant, the Dollar Store? How about the shoes that you have on your feet? The money you spent at those stores, some of that money went to those employees' benefits. That is how it works here. It works everywhere. Every dollar that comes out of our pocket goes towards someone else. We help each other in so many ways, and that's all we're asking for. I ask that you please stop thinking of it as your taxes paying for someone's spouse, but toward the benefits that our teachers and staff here deserve. We do not deserve to have benefits taken from us, just as you should not have your benefits taken from you. As you sit there and look before you to the hundreds of attendees tonight, please know that these attendees stand with our educators. We stand together in solidarity tonight, and will continue to stand together for as long as it takes.
Good evening. My name is Miranda Ship. I'm not only a resident of Shippensburg, but also a proud educator in this district. For more than twenty years, I've had the privilege of teaching here. My husband teaches in the district, and together we're raising two daughters, who are learning and growing right here in Shippensburg schools. This district isn't just where I work, this is our family, this is our home. As of today, it's been a hundred-and-nineteen days without a contract. That's a hundred-and-nineteen days of uncertainty, worry, and waiting for the people who give their hearts to this district every single day. And yet, we continue to show up. We show up for our students, for our colleagues, and for our community, because we care deeply about the children we serve. But caring shouldn't mean that we're being taken for granted. A fair contract isn't about asking for more, it's about being respected for all that we give. It's about acknowledging the long nights, the hours spent away from our families, the love, the patience, and the dedication that fills our classroom every day. We are proud to be a part of this district. We want to keep building it up together, but we need to know that the district stands with us. We need to know that Shippensburg values its educators just as deeply as we value our students. Please let us feel that support. It's time to make things right, for our teachers, for our families, and for most of all, our students.
Should've gotten here earlier. I gotta follow that. I'm Sam Hudson, I live in the borough, and I teach fourth grade. borough, and I teach 4th grade at the intermediate school. On behalf of the Shippensburg Area Education Association, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak in this evening. Our members continue to show up every day with a shared purpose, to provide the students of this district with the high-quality education they deserve. Although, excuse me, although we are currently working under an expired contract, our dedication to the students, families, and community of Shippensburg has not wavered. Each day, our members bring their best to the classrooms, ensuring that learning continues uninterrupted, and that our students feel supported, challenged, and inspired. We recognize that the process of fact-finding is now underway. While this marks an important step in the collective bargaining process, we remain optimistic that progress can and will be made at the bargaining table. We look forward to our next bargaining session this Wednesday, and are hopeful that both parties will continue to move closer to an agreement that values the hard work of educators and reflects the shared commitment we have in this district. Our goal has always been and remains to reach a fair and respectful agreement, one that allows our educators to continue to grow, serve, and thrive here in Shippensburg. We believe that through continued collaboration, open communication, and mutual respect, that goal is within reach. The association stands ready and willing to meet at any time, even tonight, if it means bringing this process to a fair conclusion. Our members and the community have shown up in force because they care deeply about this district and want to see this resolved. Together, we can take the next step towards stability, unity, and a shared future of success for Shippensburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Eden Selhammer?
I'm Eden Selhammer.
Does this come off? Anybody want to help me here?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eden Gray Selhammer, and I just wanted to say that I just wanted to say that every teacher is doing so good job, and they are helping other kids that need help. They are doing very good, and I just wanted to say thank you, Mrs. Wetzel and Mrs. Burke, for being a great teacher and being the best teacher I ever had.
And that's why you should. Board comments. Mr. Nagle.
Yeah, we'll make a comment. To the teachers and staff. We do support you. I know you might not agree with what's going on right now, but all of the decisions I make are basically data-driven. Nothing more, nothing less. It's nothing personal. I said, all of my decisions are based on data, math, from business administration, things like that. That's it. I do respect the efforts that you guys have put forth. You know, we'll get to a conclusion at some point, but I just wanted to say I do support you.
Thank you. Dr. Lyman.
I'd just like to thank all of you for coming tonight. It's a good show of support, and I hope we can come to an equitable, good conclusion here soon.
Thank you. Dr. Goats.
My only comment is I'm just, again, really excited about joining the Franklin County Learning Center. I'm appreciative of that, and anyway, just excited about that, and I have no other comment. Thanks.
Mr. Bard.
None tonight.
Mr. Carey.
None, thanks.
Mr. Scott.
I'd like to show my appreciation to the teachers that came up here with a blue ribbon. I know it's not easy working with children like that, but I commend you, putting in the time and effort, and all of you showed that you got heart in the position. And there's probably a lot of other teachers in the school that we don't get to see probably have the same heart, so I'm hoping everything works out.
Mr. Donovan.
Yeah. Wrapping up, month of October here, and I know it's Principal Appreciation Month, so I wanted to shout out, at the high school, Mrs. Fritz, Mr. Watkins, and Mr. Flor. At the middle school, Mr. Barnes, Mrs. Fitz, and Mrs. Barnhart. At the intermediate school, Mrs. Mowry, G.B., Grace Belores, Mrs. Garner, Nancy Grayson, Mrs. Avery, and Ms. Holt. And at James Byrd, Mrs. Piles. And also wanted to congratulate James Byrd on the accomplishment for being a blue-ribbon school. It's a really big accomplishment, and you can see the unity in you guys, and it looks like everybody's buying into that. So, as a board member, I appreciate seeing that. Mr. August, did you have any update on the walkers concern?
Yeah, I know some board members had expressed some concerns about skateboarders and bikers leaving the high school at dismissal. I was able to personally watch it on Wednesday and Friday of last week. I can report, I didn't see any issues with safety from those individuals that were coming out of the high school. And I touched base with the high school administration. They've had conversations with those students, stressing the importance of safety, especially as they get past that park place four-way that used to be, you know, particularly dangerous. Still a lot of moving parts there. Students should remain vigilant and safe, walking and riding, and using skateboards as they leave the high school.
Thank you. I just want to follow up. This'll be the last thing. Just give like a broad overview picture of where maybe some of us stand. As you heard earlier, I think at least most of you were here for Mr. Barwin's presentation. We're anticipating limited revenue stream from the index moving forward. That decreases the lever of what we can pull for revenues. The increases to healthcare costs are, you know, near unsustainable. You guys are all aware of that. We're almost certain to have increases in student population, being that our district is located in two counties that have some of the highest increases in those counties in the entire state. Being along the 81 corridor also contributes to that. That means potential upgrades and upgrades to facilities and increases to staff to accommodate that growth. Support staff negotiations, you know, they're right around the corner. There's an anticipated increase to those departments as well, to bring them up to a fair level. And on top of that, you know, our future borrowing capabilities are going to be limited due to the financial constraints from the tax revenues. With all that being said, like, you know, none of this is personal to you guys. You know, I look out there and I see your faces, and I know, you know, a good many of you. I live in this district too. I pay taxes, so don't take any of this personal. It is business.
So I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight. You know, our teachers are the heart of our schools, and we do fully support you. As you wear red to show unity, we're also wearing red because we do value and respect you as educators and all that you do in the classrooms for our students. The board does remain committed to reaching a fair contract that supports our teachers, our students, and our community, and we hope to continue to make progress on Wednesday, when a smaller subgroup of the association and the board meets. Information date savers. November 10, the committee of the whole planning and action meeting. November 20, we have the Facilities Committee meeting. The district is closed on December 11 due to Veterans Day. November 19, 20, and 24 is a two-hour early dismissal for students and parent-teacher conferences. November 26 is a two-hour early dismissal for students and staff, and then Thanksgiving holiday break, the district will be closed from November 27 through December 1.